Told those two to have pounders on it so you can get full, full 45 pound plates.
Yeah.
Cause you can kinda, um, you can grow fast.
Mm-hmm.
But that'll, that'll grow super fast.
Yeah, very true.
Uh-uh, test one, two, and two.
Councilmember Shkraggin's Johnson, were you able to hear us?
Now I can. Last time I just unmuted it and it worked, so try it now.
Yeah, well, um, she can hear us.
Okay. I can hear you.
But we can't hear her. Um, is it, is it possible that it's because she's... This is said that it's from outside of the organization.
That's right. I'm not using my lap.
Councilmember Shkraggin's Johnson, can you hear us now? Well, you can hear us, but if you wanna speak... And I'm pretty sure that was, I'm pretty sure that was the correction, but I don't know.
Yeah, it has to be on the crest.
Yeah, so we resolved it. She's just not in the chat anymore.
I can't hear anything.
We can hear you, so I think we're good to go now. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Perfect. We're good.
Okay, cool, yay.
Anne, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Liz, you ready? Satish? Also, catch my microphone and my sandwich? Steve, you ready? You already done it? Good evening. I call this May 23 meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. Thank you to those watching via livestream and those who are watching recording of this meeting. On May 25, a video of this meeting will be uploaded to www.townofmorrisville.org/government/live-video. Councilmember Skraggins-Johnson plans to participate remotely for the first portion of the meeting and join us in person a little bit later. At this time, I'd like to take a moment to recognize Councilmember Anne Rabadi.
Thank you, Mayor. So everyone on the council has heard me say, "Young women are going to save us." And I would like to introduce you to some of the young women who prove it. Tonight, we have with us the Green Hope High School Women in Politics Club. We have their faculty advisor, Ms. Erin Peters. You can stand up. Club president, Anika Rajesh. Sarajana Jubati. Ian House. Laura Timojin. Milka Tiagi. And Maloney Tiagi. Thank you so much for joining us, and we're happy that you're here at our meeting.
Sergeant Strickland is our sergeant in arms this evening. She has 15 years law enforcement experience, 13 years with the town of Morrisville. She has served on the crisis intervention team and has received Officer of the Year recognition several times. Thank you very much for being with us this evening. At this time, tonight's invocation will be delivered by Rabbi Israel Kotler of Chabad of Cary.
Almighty God, we stand before you in prayer. Look favorably upon the mayor and honorable members of the town council of this great town of Morrisville. Bless these distinguished individuals who have been chosen to make laws and decisions for the decision of your town. Grant these public servants guidance so that they will always be conscious of your presence and will strive and enact laws with honesty in accordance with your will. Give them the integrity to set aside their own will and try to discern yours, the wisdom to reach the right conclusions, the courage to act upon their determination, and the goodwill to respect those who have honestly arrived at different conclusions. In Lincoln's words, "May they pray not that you are on their side, but that they are on yours." As the United States observes this May as Jewish Heritage Month, ON and the town of Morrisville acknowledge it as well. On the Jewish calendar as well, this is a significant month. This Friday is the Jewish holiday of Shavuot, which means weeks, which always falls out seven weeks after Passover. And this is when Jews around the world commemorate the date that we received our law, the Torah on Mount Sinai. Just down the road from here and all over the world, Jews will gather to read the Ten Commandments, which continue to serve more than 3,000 years later as the basic yet profound instructions for how to live a moral life. These remain the basis for a godly civilization, and they serve as the guiding light for the laws that we try to enact. May the town of Morrisville serve as a beacon of light for people of all faiths and walks of life to achieve the goal so powerfully stated in our pledge of allegiance so that America is truly one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And as we just mentioned, all who are able, please stand and join in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council has questions. Are there any questions on this item? Okay, seeing none. There are four proclamations on tonight's agenda: Recognizing Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, Jewish American Heritage Month, Pride Month, and National Tennis Month. I will read the first proclamation. This is proclamation recognizing May as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. Whereas the United States Congress enacted Public Law 95-419 establishing Asian Pacific American Heritage Week in 1978, they selected early May for this observance because of two important milestones in the history of Asians in America: the arrival of Manjiro, the first Japanese citizen to settle in our country, on May 7, 1843; and the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad using a largely Chinese labor force on May 10, 1869. And whereas in 1990, reflecting the growing numbers and diversity of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders, Congress expanded the observance from one week to the entire month of May. And whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month offers us an opportunity to celebrate the vast contributions Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have made to our nation, reflect on the challenges still faced by AAPI communities, and recommit to making the American dream a reality for all. And whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders comprise many ethnicities and languages, and their myriad achievements embody the American experience. Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have started businesses, including some of our nation's most successful and dynamic enterprises. AAPI men and women are leaders in every aspect of American life: in government and industry, science and medicine, the arts, and our armed forces, education, and sports. And now therefore, the Town Council of the town of Morrisville does hereby recognize May as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. This month, we encourage residents to reflect on the indelible ways AAPI communities have shaped our national life. As we celebrate centuries of trial and triumph, let us rededicate ourselves to making Morrisville a place that welcomes the contributions of all people, all colors, and all creeds, and ensures the American dream is within reach for all who seek it. I also have the honor of reading the second proclamation. Whereas on April 20, 2006, President George W. Bush proclaimed that May would be Jewish American Heritage Month to recognize the more than 350-year history of Jewish contributions to America and American culture. And whereas the proclamation reads that "The Jewish American experience is a story of faith, fortitude, and progress. It is a quintessential American experience, one that is connected to key tenets of American identity, including our nation's commitment to freedom of religion and conscience. This month, we honor Jewish Americans, past and present, who have inextricably woven their experience and their accomplishments into the fabric of our national identity. And whereas from our nation's earliest days, Jewish Americans have been an essential part of the American story, greatly contributing to the religious, cultural, political, economic, and intellectual advancement of all people even while in the face of discrimination and adversity. And whereas throughout our history, Jewish Americans have made major contributions to society and culture in science, medicine, literature, the arts, sports, business, technology, civil rights, government, and military service. And whereas we are reminded that the vibrant culture and life of the Jewish people has experienced prejudice and discrimination, and that Jewish communities continue to confront hostility and bigotry, and that we all share the obligation to condemn and combat antisemitism and hatred wherever it exists. And whereas as we celebrate the rich heritage of the Jewish American community, we recognize that Jewish Americans have worked tirelessly to strengthen the promise of religious freedom and civil rights in the United States by joining together with all faiths to reject ignorance and intolerance, teach empathy and compassion, and root out hatred wherever it exists. And through our understanding and study of the Holocaust, we know the human devastation that can come from systematic prejudice and are compelled to never forget. Now therefore, the Town Council of the town of Morrisville does hereby proclaim that the month of May be celebrated as Jewish American Heritage Month in the town of Morrisville and calls upon all residents, businesses, and visitors to acknowledge and celebrate the Jewish faith and the contributions made to our community. At this time, I'd like to ask the rabbi if he'd come on up and accept this proclamation. Thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you for all you do.
If you'd like to share any more thoughts or tell us about your progress.
We're blessed to live in a town that has embraced the Jewish community as all faiths. And please, God, within a year or two, we'll have a building, Jewish Center, just a stone's throw away from where we are today. So deeply thankful to the Town Council, the staff, and all those that are helping us in that and making this place just a wonderful place, a diverse place, a place that respects everyone. The mayor, as others have mentioned, unfortunately, that discrimination and antisemitism still carry alive in this world. I am pleased to say here that we've not experienced that in this town. Please, God, may that only continue. Thank you all for what you do in being people that love all faiths and all people around you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Or that? Have a nice day.
Thank you so much. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. This will be the last one for me, and then Councilmember Rao will do the final. This is proclamation recognizing June as Pride Month. Whereas June is Pride Month in which lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and others people and allies come together in various celebrations. And whereas the town of Morrisville stands with the LGBTQ+ community in a celebration of diversity and unity and in remembrance of how far our country has come in the struggle to ensure that people live openly without discrimination and the affirmation of equal rights. And whereas we are proud to join other communities in acknowledging June as Pride Month and reaffirm our town's belief in the equal dignity of all people, regardless of their sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression. Now therefore, the Town Council of the town of Morrisville does hereby proclaim the month of June as LGBTQ+ Pride Month and invites everyone to reflect on ways we can all live and work together with a commitment to respect and dignity and to celebrate our diverse community. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Rao for our final proclamation of the evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I begin my proclamation, I brought my tennis racket in today that I play college tennis with and looking forward to using it when we serve it up to open up the courts in Morrisville Community Park. And before I read the proclamation, just want to thank the USTA for everything you do to promote tennis. 24 million people in the Archon Field play tennis, the leagues, the tournaments. North Carolina has a lot of tennis greats that came from our state. Andy Andrews, who the tennis stadium was named after from NC State, who was 50 in the world. Coach JW Eisenhower, who coached him to national championships. John Sodri, who is in the Sports Hall of Fame. And John Isner, who is retiring soon but has been in the top 10 in the world from Greensboro, North Carolina, and trained in Raleigh. And then finally, Nick Boliteri, who died last year and was the best tennis coach in the world, who actually ran the Cary Tennis Center for one year in 2001. So with that, I'm going to read this proclamation recognizing May as National Tennis Month. Whereas on May 21, 1881, the United States Tennis Association, originally known as the United States National Lawn Tennis Association, was founded in New York City, New York, to create rules and standards for the emerging game of lawn tennis. And whereas the USTA is the nonprofit national governing body for tennis in the United States with over 550,000 members, is the largest organization in the world and leads the promotion and growth of the sport at every level of play, from beginners to professionals at the US Open. And whereas, the USTA proudly partners with local tennis programs to showcase the important health, social, and educational benefits of tennis and make the sport available to everyone regardless of age, environment, condition, or ability through its USTA adaptive grants. And whereas, the latest research by the Physical Activity Council shows, the PACE, shows that more than 23.6 million Americans played tennis in 2022, an unprecedented 33% increase in participation over 2019, and the highest number of players since the PACE study began in 2007. And whereas, by increasing the accessibility of tennis for citizens of the town of Morrisville of all ages and ability, the USTA has contributed to making our community happier and healthier. And whereas, USTA has declared the month of May as National Tennis Month to encourage players, organizations, facilities, retailers, tennis manufacturers, and more to promote local programs and activities at parks and facilities to showcase tennis and spread the word about the sport and its benefits and to help players and non-players alike find courts and play opportunities in their communities. Now therefore, the Town Council of the town of Morrisville does hereby recognize May as National Tennis Month and urges the community to support National Tennis Month.
Thank you. I don't see her.
Okay. Well, we want to thank Laura Weigand, who runs Western Wake Tennis Association, who is going to accept this. We want to thank her for all the work she's doing for tennis. And every day is tennis day for me, so thank you.
Well, soon every day will be tennis day throughout Morrisville, which is great. At this time, we're at Item 10, Public Address. Town Clerk Smith. Were there any people signed up for public comments?
Yes, sir, there was. One individual signed up to provide a public comment. Abby Stotzenberg.
Okay. Principal, you'll have, if you name and your residential address and your role for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak on any topic of your choosing.
My name is Abby Stotzenberg. My residential address is 1300 Benwick Parkway in Durham. I am the proud principal of Morrisville's First High School, Wake Early College of Information, and Biotechnologies. And so I just wanted to take a few moments. This is our last day of school, and as such, I wanted to give the council some highlights of our school year and just say some words of thanks for all support that you have given us as the Town Council and as the town of Morrisville. First, I think I want to just make sure everybody is aware that we had a top 10 finalist for a teacher for Teacher of the Year. You recognized him a few months ago, Mr. Leroy Salazar, our Spanish teacher. We are very proud of him and have been celebrating his accomplishments for the past several months. But much of what I wish to speak about next is just about the partnerships that we have forged throughout the rest of the school year, and so that's mostly what I'll be speaking of next. First, I think it's important to acknowledge that we have been able to establish a supportive PTSA and a fledgling business alliance. They have helped us with program offerings such as Young Professionals Day, Financial Futures Day, and a career forum that featured dozens of guest speakers across multiple businesses and RTP. We've also forged partnerships through our project-based instruction. We utilize PBL as our primary cornerstone of our academic program. These projects have included students creating personal memoirs in English modeled after Trevor Noah's bestselling book, Born a Crime, and publishing them via student-created websites. Students have learned trigonometry by building catapults and launching all sorts of objects across the lawn at Wake Tech. They've written policy memos, research reports, written code for apps and games, created podcasts, and pitched New Societies to Shark Tank panels. Some of you served on those panels, so we appreciate that. As part of PBL, our Spanish classes have partnered with Lulu Publishing and RTP to help students design and publish books that they wrote in English and Spanish. They received inspirational support from actual authors, language support from high school students in Mexico, and have taken their finished projects to share with a Spanish immersion elementary school in the district. In addition, our civic literacy class has created an app, soon to be available on the App Store, that provides a guided walking tour of downtown Raleigh. The focus of the tour specifically highlights lesser-known aspects of African-American history in Raleigh, and this includes the Freedom Park, which is soon to open. This was a partnership between the Freedom Park, UNC History Professors, Holt Brothers Construction, Mount Hope Cemetery, the Pope House Museum, Root Ed, Explorers, and Wake Young Women's Leadership Academy. Many of these experiences were profiled during our end-of-year academic showcase last week. We appreciate Mayor Colley and Mr. Rao for their support that day in listening to our student presentations. In all, it's been a wonderful year with amazing students, staff, families, and community stakeholders, which includes this council and the Town of Morrisville. We sincerely appreciate the support and partnership this year and look forward to continuing the partnership for years to come. Sincerely, thank you.
Thank you so much. You want to tell us who your seatmate is there?
This is Cedric Williams. He is the area superintendent for the northwestern area of Wake County Schools.
Thank you both very much for being here this evening. There is no other signups. Is there anyone in the room who wants to address this body for three minutes on any subject of your choosing while you're here? People are thinking about it, but not. Okay, that's fine. Appreciate it. At this time, we're at Item 11, Public Hearings. There are two public hearings on this evening's agenda: Proposed UDO Text Amendments Related to Murals and the FY 2024 Proposed Annual Operating Budget and Capital Investment Program. Brittany Johnson, Planner 2, will facilitate the first item. Welcome back. We're always very excited to see you as you keep on bringing forth the progress on our murals.
I'm excited to be here as well. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It is my pleasure again to be here before you all with these proposed UDO text amendments related to murals. I have a lot of information for you all, so I ask that you please hold all questions until the end of the presentation. Hopefully, most of your questions will be addressed along the way. Without further delay, I'll get started. The proposed mural program is one component of the future Morrisville Public Art Program. This presentation will focus on the text amendments needed to facilitate the program on town-owned and private properties. A little about background, on December 13th, staff provided a briefing to council, providing an overview of the proposed program, and council selected the first three locations for mural installation. On January 25th, staff briefed the Parks, Recs, and Cultural Resources Advisory Committee, providing an overview of the program and explained the committee's role as determined by council. On March 14th, staff briefed council concerning existing UDO language that allows public art and the RFP process. And on April 13th, the Planning and Zoning Board reviewed the proposed text amendments related to murals. The proposed amendments received a default recommendation of denial via a tied 2-2 vote. PZB's concerns were limiting the area of mural installation, prohibiting painting on brick, and also restricting mural content. Now we have the background on the mural program and the flow chart associated with that. That's everything from research to implementation. Step one was research. We researched existing programs, assessed the strengths and weaknesses of those programs. Step two was planning. We formed a multi-departmental mural advisory committee consisting of staff from planning, public works, communications, and parks and recreation. Step three, we established the Town of Morrisville Mural Program Framework in that we identified mural installation locations and also designed an approval process. Step four, which is pilot program finalization, that's our current step. We selected, we had those site-specific evaluation, as well as that included cost estimates updating council, as well as recommending and adopting UDO amendments. Step five, implementation, we will be issuing the request for proposals, as well as reviewing those mural proposals and then selecting a muralist. The final step will be, step six, will be, which is installation. Proposed UDO amendments. The proposed text amendments would pertain to Articles 4, 5, and 11. The first would be Section 4.3.4, Accessory Use Structure Table. We would be specifying each zoning designation that permits murals as an accessory use. Section 4.3.5b18, the accessory use specific standards, will be outlining the use specific standards associated with installation of murals as a permitted accessory use. Section 5.9.4b2, the non-residential group living and mixed-use exterior facade materials table, we would be amending this table to allow murals to be painted on brick. And then lastly, Section 11.5, Terms and Uses Defined, we will be amending Section 11.5, Terms and Uses, to include the term mural. So Section 4.3.4, Accessory Use Structure Table. The proposed amendments presented to PZB permit murals in the parks, green space, and open space Conservation District and all non-residential zoning districts. PZB suggested limiting the number of zoning designations that permitted murals. Therefore, we have now updated that. So the excluded districts would be all residential zoning districts and the industrial management zoning district as well. This is an update for you all, that we would be including the office institutional zoning designation, but only allowing that for murals on town-owned properties within that district. Therefore, essentially, all of the magenta areas and the blue areas excluding town-owned properties would not permit murals. Now we have those permitted districts. That would be all of the commercial districts, as well as office institutional, but only, again, those town-owned properties. With that being said, the updated table would permit murals in the PGO Conservation District, all non-residential zoning districts, except for industrial management, and only on town-owned properties within office institutional. So you'll see that it is permitted in office institutional, but again, only for those town-owned Moving on to Section 4.3.5b18, that's our accessory use specific standards. Accessory use specific standards, these standards are updated from the Planning and Zoning Board's concerns. The most significant change is that murals will be permitted to be completed off-site on movable panels and installed on exterior facades. This would allow for an alternative to painting directly onto facade walls. So let's go ahead and review those site-specific standards, use-specific standards, sorry. So A would be not permitting, we would not permit murals on any sort of single-family detached or attached or duplex structures. Also, murals would be permitted in the office institutional zoning district for properties owned by the Town of Morrisville, as well as we have some information concerning mural sizing allotments. So one, murals may cover up to 100% of one exterior facade that's rear or side of a structure. Or two, murals may cover up to 50% of two side or rear exterior facade walls on a structure. And notwithstanding Sections 1 and 2 above, structures owned by the Town of Morrisville may cover up to 100% of two exterior facade walls, whether that be front side or rear. Section D, murals shall be maintained in good repair, free from paling or paint or damage due to age, weather, or vandalism, or failure of materials. And if the mural fails to be in good repair, this may result in enforcement action by the town. E, we have anti-graffiti coating would be required, and that's non-sacrificial. That just simply means that it would be permanent. F, we have the UV ray-resistant paint is required. G, brick surfaces must be power washed and primed with at least two coats prior to mural installation. H, if all... All right, I can't see. Going to zoom in just a little. H, if for any reason a mural is removed, altered, or destroyed, the property owner is responsible for restoring the surface of the mural, and that it must be painted, or if it was damaged due to mounting as well, so they would have to restore it to its original condition. I, if a mural is constructed off-site on movable panels to be installed on a facade, the attachment of the said panel must comply with the building code, subject to required permits and inspections. Panels must not cover windows or any sort of exhaust or anything of that nature. As well as, those panels must be affixed to the building with rust-resistant materials, and if they're completed on wood, wood panels must be sanded, sealed with waterproofing, as well as proper top coats, and that should be on the front, side, and back of those panels. So Section I, all proposed murals must be completed by artists having completed works of comparable scale. Next, we have Section 5.9.4b2, that's our non-residential group living and mixed-use accessory, sorry, exterior facade materials. Table 5.9.4b2 is again that non-residential group living and mixed-use exterior facade materials. The UDO currently prohibits the painting of brick, stone, rock, and concrete masonry unit. The proposed amendment would amend Table 5.9.4b2 to allow painting of murals on these Section 11.5, that's our Terms and Uses Defined. The proposed amendment to Section 11.5, Terms and Uses Defined, will define the term mural. The definition below was presented to PZB. It read, "An original one-of-a-kind design or representation which does not contain promotional or commercial advertising painted or drawn on an exterior wall or ceiling. Murals shall not contain words in any language, symbols, or representations that are offensive, obscene, of political nature, or are derogatory." PZB was concerned about wanting to limit political speech and also wanting us to do additional research for definitions in other communities for comparison. Staff researched additional definitions from various cities. That included the city of Los Angeles, California, Panama City, Florida, Garner, North Carolina, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, and Durham, North Carolina. These cities were selected because they represent a geographical and size-population cross-section. The Planning and Zoning Board was concerned about controlling content, and these definitions demonstrate that cities, large and small, rural and urban, all have similar definitions. They more so focus on limiting advertisement, as well as specifying the artwork must be unique, and also the preferred application to a facade. The proposed amendments would amend 11.5, Terms and Uses Defined. This is the updated definition. Mural, an original one-of-a-kind painting or other work that is painted, drawn, or affixed to an exterior wall. Murals shall not contain or include, one, promotional or commercial advertisement; two, words, symbols, or representations that are offensive, obscene, of a political nature, or derogatory in any language; or, three, electrical or mechanical components that are of changing image or display. Now, a little overview of the approval process. So the approval process for those town-owned properties, one, we have, of course, formed an interdepartmental committee. We have identified the first three locations for installation. Those were selected by you all. And then we will release the RFP. The advisory committee will then review those RFPs, and then Town Council will select the final design for each location. We will award the contract, and then commission murals. The approval process for private properties, this will be a staff-level review. We will review to ensure that the proposed mural complies with the definition of a mural and as defined by the UDO. We will then verify that the proposed mural is permitted as an accessory use in that zoning designation, and finally, verify that the proposed mural meets the use-specific standards outlined in the UDO. If you all have any questions for me?
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Rabody, please.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. So what is the issue with having murals in the office or industrial area?
So when staff presented to PZB, one of their concerns were, you know, murals being able to be installed everywhere across town in all zoning designations. So staff, we took a look at those. I'm going to go back to the map here so we can reference that. When looking at the zoning map here, we thought that limiting the office institutional and industrial management, one, this is consisting of a pilot program, so we do have the ability to expand later. As well as if you look, some of these office institutional areas and industrial management zoned areas do border residential areas, so we would have a buffer for that. And again, we would be able to expand in the future.
So we already have buffer zones that are in our UDO between office and residential already?
Yes, we have tree-type buffers that are required. I think it was more so just looking at the ability to roll this out slowly, being able to amend this later, and then, you know, as we see how the community is reacting to it, and then having the ability to grow.
Okay. I mean, I can understand that point of view. I just think there are a lot of industrial management areas that could be beautified by having murals on the side of them. So I would see that as being a positive, having murals in those types of zones. So I'd be interested to hear what the other councilmembers think on that. And then my other comment would be on, I have another one after that, would be on the multifamily apartments. There's a couple of apartment complexes around, I think, could be enhanced by having murals among the side of them as well. Especially the one that McCrimmon and... Especially the one that McCrimmon and Morrisville Carpenter. And, okay, and I'm sorry, one other question was on the si- sizing allowances. I guess I don't understand what the concern is, why you need to limit, like, if you wanted to have a mural on two sides, why do you have to limit to 50%? Why would, why would you not allow 100% of two sides, or even three sides, being murals? But I, I don't see an issue with that. That's all I have.
Okay. If we could all make sure that our microphones are centered and up high, just so everyone can hear. Councilmember Robody, please. And on, as you just did. No, not saying anyone in particular.
Tricky technology. So plus one to everything that Councilmember Fender said. Also, you clearly put a ton of work into this, thank you very much. I'm really excited about this program. I specifically wanted to ask, actually, this slide is the one I want to ask about. So the program is a pilot, so the intent is to keep it fairly small in the beginning. And I just wanted to make sure, when we say commercial zoning districts where murals will be permitted, this is commercial zoning districts that are also town-owned properties? Or are we opening this up to commercial zoning districts and town-owned properties?
Commercial zoning districts and town-owned properties.
Okay, so then, once the program gets started, can, can any building within the commercial, within the, any of these zones listed here, start putting up murals?
Yes.
Okay, subject to review by the program, and so, so, okay, so what am I trying to say? All right, so the, the steps that you laid out for approval for, those would be obviously for town-owned properties. But the commercial properties, will they have a different process? Like, will they be able to, to just submit and let us know what, what they're going to do? Or do we actually have approval over that, over those also?
Yes, so it would be a separate process. Those town-owned properties would be subject to that RFP. The private properties would, we're proposing a staff level review. We would review, of course, to make sure that the mural complies with our definition of a mural, is defined by the UDO, verify that proposed mural is permitted in that, as the accessory use in its zoning designation, and then also make sure that the proposed mural meets the use-specific standards outlined by the UDO.
Okay, so in other words, right there in black and white, you are so sweet not to say that. Okay, that's all I had, and again, plus one on everything Councilmember Fender said. I actually think, I'd like to go one step further and say that I think that a mural on 50% of a wall, I don't think that's aesthetically as good as a mural on 100% of a wall. So, you know, I just, I would like to push back on that. I think if you're going to, you know, I say go big or go home.
Now, mine's on. I would also echo the comments before. I saw a really nice mural in Knightdale at one of their parks that was essentially wrapping an entire metal building, and it made it really nice. So I think that with our review, we can contain things that are out of hand, but I'd like to give the flexibility to start for the first few, and then move from there. I like the idea of the pilot program and how we're moving it along. So those are my feedbacks. Mayor Potem Johnson?
So, yeah, as far as the, you know, where we're going to roll this out, I agree. I think there are some industrial areas that could use murals that would help. But also, here's that, you know, we got to balance everything. I also like the idea of kind of rolling this out kind of slowly, although slowly, commercial and town-owned properties, that's a big area, that's not small. But, so I'm okay with starting this way, but maybe coming back and tweaking it as time goes on. I'm not sure we're going to see murals all over the place. I don't think just because we put this in place means that there's going to be mural on the side of every building in town. But, but let's, let's start and see where it goes. As far as the approval goes, I guess the, the Planning and Zoning Board had, clearly probably didn't have as much concern with town-owned properties, because that is going to come before council, and we're all, we'll all have a say in it. But are they, were they more concerned about the approval process for non-town-owned properties? Is that, I'm trying to understand how to help understand their concern.
Yes, and the Planning and Zoning Board, they were, again, it was by a two-to-two vote. And so their, their major concern was, one, allowing painting on brick across the board, and then also limiting those areas of installation.
Okay, so, so if, if for now, private properties, are you all comfortable with being the ones that have to approve the designs that may come in? Is, is this tight enough, is the language tight enough for you all to, to manage that? And I, I guess the answer is yes, because you're the one that has created the language. Are you, you're comfortable with that then, and you feel like you could keep out anything offensive and everything that we would not be very happy with?
Staff does feel comfortable making that determination. I will also say that, again, this is a pilot program, so we can certainly go back and address things as needed and necessary.
Okay, yeah, and I, as I always say, you've got to start somewhere, so. And then as far as the percentage goes, I think I'm on the same wavelength as everybody else, where I'm not sure about the, the need to limit the percentage, you know, 150. But, and I know, Brittany, you've, you've given us examples in the past. Is there some way you can show us some examples of what 100% versus like a 50% building? And so we can maybe get a feel for what that looks like? That might be helpful before we actually vote on this.
I don't have examples readily available with me. Again, if the, the size limitation is something that you all feel strongly about, we can certainly address that.
Okay, not, not, I'm not, I need to do some homework on my own then, but I'm good so far. Thank you.
Councilmember Row, please.
Very helpful presentation. I just continue to be excited about how, you know, this program can be used to get more feedback from our artist, artist community here. I think that's something in Morrisville that we haven't really seen a lot over the years, you know, having our own kind of arts festivals and things like that. But I think just getting ideas, people might want to send an idea. So whatever we can do as we grow this program to make sure that we're working on our social media challenges, to educate the artist community about it, how do we leverage youth to educate us about, you know, different types of murals that they think, even though we may not contact with them, I just like it as a way that we can keep them engaged. So just whatever we can do moving forward would be, would be great.
Any other qu- questions for Ms. Johnson? Okay, seeing none, remind us next steps, please.
So tonight, again, is your public hearing, so we would have action on the item at the next meeting, which would be June 13th.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Town Clerk, are there any, is there anyone signed up for this public hearing?
No, sir, there were no individuals sign up to provide in-person public hearing comments.
Okay, is there anyone here in the room? Do we receive anything by email, just to confirm? Any email?
No, sir.
No, thank you. Anyone in the room want to speak on this public hearing? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing, if that's the will of the council.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously, six-zero. The public hearing is closed. Any discussion on this? Does anyone have any other questions or thoughts, or scheduled to vote on this on June 13th at our next meeting? Sounds like you'll come back with perhaps some changed language for us to adopt, and we can look at it between the Thursday and the meeting and hammer that out. Okay, any final thoughts?
No final thoughts.
I think we're all very excited. Thank you very much, we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on to our next public hearing. We'll have Jeannie Hooks, Director of Management Services, facilitating this item.
Okay, Eric, that's good for right now. So, good evening. So tonight, I would like to provide you with just a quick update on the item before I ask you to open and conduct a public hearing. So briefly, the budget remains at $49 million for the general fund and the stormwater operating funds. The proposed tax rate remains unchanged, as it is right now, 39 cents. And the stormwater fee is still planned or proposed to increase by $10 per ERU. The budget includes means for the appropriation of remaining ARPA funds to leverage for, for projects and good things for the community. And it outlines also a capital budget for the same, and investing really critical dollars for capital projects for fiscal year 2024, along with other smaller, non-operational funds. The only item that changes tonight in the proposed budget is a result of some council deliberations at, actually at our last work session. And we have removed at your request the two new proposed senior center fees that really relate to Punch Pass and a monthly pass for fitness and exercise. And that has been shifted in lieu to the advisory committee to evaluate and bring back potentially future considerations. The other clarification that we added at your request was to define the shelter rentals, the minimum. We have set that and defined that at a half a day, and that there is no hourly rate. So that has been clarified as well in the documents. So at this time, I would ask council to conduct your public hearing as advertised, collect some additional input, if those wish to speak on the budget tonight or here, and then close the public hearing accordingly. Staff has received only a few new comments through the various vehicles that we have out there. And there was such great recognition going on earlier this afternoon, I couldn't put these at your place. So I have copies for you that I emailed, and if I can ask Town Clerk Smith to help me pass these out. Because we appreciate everyone who makes comments and provides information to this important decision. Again, al- almost all of these were sent to you earlier this afternoon. I did have one late one that I added at the very end and that I highlighted for you. So Mayor, with that said, I hand this back to you to open a public hearing, if you're ready, or to help address any questions, if you'd like to.
Does anyone have any questions before we open the public hearing? Actually, why don't we just take a couple of moments to review what we were just giving?
Absolutely.
Is it possible to put it on the screen so others can view it if they wish?
Eric, do you want to get me to the P drive of the item? Thank you. Miss, the one that says additional comments. I'll also add, Mayor, that staff has, through the budget portal, we tried to make it more of a two-way portal this year. So we have been trying to work with those that have made some comments that were more questions to make sure that we get good information. We're still working on a few of those to collect the information, but we've tried to reach out to each one.
Okay, and your FOQs have been very robust, so we appreciate the answers you provided in that space as well. So at this time, I think we've reviewed it, so I guess this is kind of more for the recording, so people will have this. If we could just scroll down so that they can see it on our screens, on the recording in the future. So that's the end of the first page, so let's leave it there for a second. And then if we could show the second page for the record. Can we fit it all? Not quite, okay.
We have one more page.
Yep, understood. Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that. Did anyone have any comments before the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, I declare the public hearing open at this time. Is there anyone signed up to address the group on this subject, please, sir?
Yes, sir, we did have one individual sign up to give in-person public comment, Patricia Burcott.
Okay. Your name, residential address, and your role for the record, please, and you'll have three minutes. Welcome.
My name is Patricia Birch. My address is 4369 Stony Falls Way in Knightdale, North Carolina, 27545. And I am CEO for Habitat for Humanity of Wake County. Since 1985, Habitat Wake has built over 900 homes and repaired over 400 existing homes in Wake and Johnston counties. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on the manager's proposed budget for fiscal year 24. We are thrilled that Morrisville is planning for affordable housing and working to address the need for affordable housing in this community. The initiatives that you've identified as a town are great steps to increasing homeownership and will support some of the town's most important residents, schoolteachers, police officers, and other public servants that contribute every day to this community. Yet, the proposed fiscal year 24 budget does not show affordable housing as a priority for the town. The budget proposes that a penny increase in property taxes, tax rate would be necessary to implement this plan, and yet it does not include this funding in the proposed budget. The town's timeline for the Affordable Housing Plan indicates that the implementation of an Affordable Housing Plan would start in fiscal year 24, fall 2023, and early 2024. Without dedicated funds available in fiscal year 24, implementation of the Affordable Housing Plan will be delayed. There is no reason to wait. The housing market continues to pose challenges for residents, affordable housing builders, and nonprofits like Habitat. With dedicated funding available in the fiscal year 24 budget, the town could be nimble and respond to opportunities for affordable housing partnerships as they come up. Habitat, for one, would love to partner with, with the town to make homeownership a reality for residents under 80% of AMI in Morrisville. But the housing market continues to be a highly competitive, and local dedicated funding could be the difference that makes an affordable development a reality. The time for the Town Council to act on affordable housing is now. We respectfully request that the town include a penny for affordable housing in the town's fiscal year 24 budget. Thank you for your time and for the opportunity to comment on the proposed budget. We look forward to continuing the conversation and exploring how we can partner with the town in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anyone else signed up, Town Clerk Smith?
No, sir.
And any email comments?
Yes, sir. There was one comment received via email from Charles Monahan, 1200 Circadian Court. Mayor Colley, members of the Town Council. My name is Charles P. Monahan, and I am a homeowner at 1200 Circadian Court in the Kits Crete neighborhood. I'd like to submit these comments on the 2024 proposed operating budget. The council pub, the council published the town's first affordable housing plan four years ago in 2019. In these past four years, my own home as an In these past four years, my own home has increased sixty-five percent in value. I assume every other housing option in town has increased by a similar amount. Every year, affordable housing becomes more important as all the housing options become much more expensive. Currently, our Affordable Housing Plan is in phase two, which is working on designing a down payment assistance program for qualified town employees and looking to review possible land donations or land trust options for affordable housing developers. While these actions are commendable, the town has never developed a dedicated revenue stream to fund any final affordable housing options. Failure to have a dedicated funding source in place will put Morrisville at a disadvantage once a final option is chosen. It is very likely that in the next few years, homes will only become more expensive as our town develops multiple new biomanufacturing and research campuses and quickly totally runs out of land capable of being developed into residential housing units. Morrisville's current tax rate of thirty-nine cent per hundred-dollar valuation, I strongly encourage the town to add one cent per one hundred-dollar valuation increase that would be dedicated in the twenty-twenty-four budget to fund whatever affordable housing option is finally chosen. Having this revenue source in place will help with negotiations with developers and allow the town to move faster once the path forward is chosen.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on the budget as part of the public hearing? Okay, seeing none. This was well-publicized in advance. I would feel comfortable closing the public hearing at this time if that's the will of the council. If there's not a motion, it'll stay open until June thirteenth.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, all those in favor of closing the public hearing on this year's budget, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously six-zero. Our public hearing is closed on the budget.
Thank you.
And this will be one of the action items we're discussing later.
Yes, sir, and then you can provide staff direction from there.
Okay, good. According to my agenda, we're scheduled to take a break, but we're a little ahead of schedule. If it's the will of the council, we can do one or two action items before we take a break. Is that okay with everybody? Okay, great. Item twelve, action items. There are three action items on this evening's agenda: a resolution amending personnel policies, a resolution and capital project ordinance amendment authorizing J. Morris Commons Lane Extension Construction Contract and adoption of the F Y twenty-twenty-four Annual Operating Budget and Capital Investment Program. Nate Meyer, Senior Human Resources Analyst, will facilitate the first item. Mr. Meyer, Mayor.
You got it, thank you. All right, thank you very much, good evening, and happy to be back here with you all this evening. As you recall, in our last meeting, we discussed a detailed review of the personnel policies at the May ninth meeting. The town attorney's office has reviewed, and some minor updates were made, and there was also one new section to accommodate parent involvement in schools that was created as well. I'll pull that up here real quick for you. The information here was originally located in two separate sections in the policy, and for clarity, it was combined to create this new section following that review by the town attorney's office. This section will also capture a general statute requiring unpaid leave of four hours for parents for school-aged children to be involved in that child's school. Much of this information was already included, it's just combining it in one area so that we can eliminate any confusion from having to find that information in multiple places. Aside from that, other updates were made, just minor updates in some other sections, specifically for the definition on interns, to just clarify that they're not eligible for any benefits, and then for the floating holidays that we did propose in the last meeting, just some rewording to clarify the equivalent hours that would be applicable for the different classes of employees in town. Is there any questions I can answer on any of those?
Councilmember Robody, please.
Yeah, the provision that the employee has to provide written verification from a child's school that the employee attended or enrolled in the school during time period, is that standard across, is that a municipal government provision or something like that?
The general statute lists that in there, that that is something that must be required upon request. So, upon request is important there, that should the supervisor choose not to request that document, that's within their right as well.
Okay, so, just so I understand, we're required to have this provision in the policy, but the supervisor is legally requested to demand it from the employee, is that?
Right, yes, correct, yes. Upon request, yes, so they don't necessarily have to.
And the other question I have was, we had briefly talked, I think you and I talked about June nineteenth, Juneeenth as an employee holiday, we didn't really, I know we didn't take it to a vote or anything, so I'm just wondering what would be the next steps in having, in, due to the way it's announced, how is it changed, or what would you have to have in order to?
Sure, so the floating holidays are designed to address that in that sense, so employees would have the option to choose to use the floating holidays for Juneeenth. However, the work group that we've been discussing having together, that will be one of the topics to discuss with that work group for consideration for council. You got it.
Mayor Pretem Johnson. Yeah, I see you looking.
I have lots of papers here.
I contributed to some of that, I know.
Some is my own, my own. This is a fabulous document, and as I was going through it, there are portions under Article Five, the conditions of employment, there are portions of that that I realize this document is not for council, for the manager, for the attorney, but there are portions of that that are, I think, really important to somehow recognize for the rest of us, too. So, I don't know what that answer is, and I don't even know if it's the work group that maybe could help us with that, if there's something, if this maybe is this a, you know, an item that council takes up down the road, but I just want to make that statement. I think it's really important. There were, you know, there were things as far as, now I can't find my place, it had to do with like sexual harassment and ethics and all of that, really important wording that I want to make sure the rest of us, you know, at least in a policy adhere to as well.
Understood.
So, anyhow, so, I don't know if the work group can help us or if we need to do that later on, but that's, you can take that and run with it if you think you've got it, or we'll, I'll bring it up again, I'll keep it alive, too, so.
Yeah, we'll certainly, I'll add it to our healthy list of work group items that we have.
Remind me, if you will, every retreat, we have to go ahead and reaffirm all the personnel policies, or is that just the town council policies?
I'm not sure with the retreat, if that's something that's.
Good evening, Town Council.
Good evening, welcome.
You affirm policies for yourself, your code of conduct and your administrative rules of procedure.
Okay, so you'd be interested in maybe adding some of Article Five into ours, maybe in the future?
I don't think it's all, I think it's important what you have in here, and I'm not sure we have it in our own policies.
Understood.
Okay. Was there anything else on this item? Okay, if we're all happy, we're scheduled for action on this item. Is there a motion and second to adopt Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash one-five-zero dash zero? Have a motion and this. Do we have to say by, read that out completely, or are we good? Okay, sorry.
Yes, thank you.
I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-thirteen, one, twenty-thirteen?
Twenty-twenty-three?
Twenty-twenty-three dash one-fifty dash zero, amending the town of Morrisville personnel policies as recommended by Human Resources staff.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, that carries six-zero unanimously. Thank you very much, I know that was a lot of hard work.
Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Good catch, Councilmember Robody. We're at item twelve B, as in Bravo. Mark Spanioli, P E, Director of Engineering, will facilitate the next item.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Mark Spanioli, Director of Engineering, for the record. Item twelve B is a resolution and capital project ordinance amendment authorizing J. Morris Commons Lane Extension Construction Contract as part of the development of Fire Station Number Three. We are looking to construct J. Morris Commons Lane north of where it currently terminates to connect with George Watts Hill Drive and ultimately with Davis Drive to improve our emergency response times to the north of the station. To develop this road access, we've entered into an access easement agreement with Fuji Film Diocent, so we are looking to move forward with the project. So, we are recommending approval of the resolution to award a contract to Hindsight Work and adoption of the Capital Project Ordinance Amendment appropriating additional funds necessary to construct the extension of J. Morris Commons Lane, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, we've gone over this a couple of times, so does anyone have any questions at this time? Would you like us to take action on this one?
That'd be great.
Keep it moving? Okay. I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash one-ninety-six dash zero of the Morrisville Town Council authorizing the extension of a contract with Hindsight Work Inc. for the J. Morris Commons Lane Extension Project.
Motion and second, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously six-zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Me neither, capital budget ordinance. Yeah, okay, I make a motion to approve capital budget ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash one-ninety-six dash zero of the Morrisville Town Council amending the Public Safety Improvement Capital Project Fund.
Any discussion on that motion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously six-zero as well. Thank you very much. At this time, might be a good time to take a break. So, it's seven thirteen, if we could reconvene at seven twenty-nine, please. I didn't hear what you said.
I said yes.
Town Manager Page, ready to reconvene? Okay. We are reconvening. At this time, Martha Page, Town Manager, and Jeannie Hooks, Director of Management Services, will facilitate the final action item of the evening.
So, good evening, Mayor. As earlier, as you heard me say, I provided you with an update and wanted to make sure that was before the public hearing, so people would understand what direction you had given us and the things that we had adjusted in the budget. So, at this time, Mayor, I pass this back to you for council to continue discussions. Staff is here, happy to answer questions and receive direction as a result. I'm going to pause here to see if Town Manager Page had a few comments.
Thank you, Jeannie. As always, I'd like to thank council for their thoughtful discussion about the proposed budget and how it aligns with the priorities that we've been discussing, not at the last meeting or the meeting before, but all year, including way back to the retreat. But there's many items that we talk about that are years in the making. One of those is affordable housing, that we have indicated there are not current resources in the budget to support that program, and as you continue to explore how you are going to deliver that program, I think it'll better inform your future decisions on how you want it to be placed in your budget. The budget you have before you does represent being able to continue to perform the work we do at the same levels and a encouragement to really consider that resource capacity again in the continued budget discussions in the future. It was a tough budget to put together, I think, for staff and for council, but I think it was a thoughtful, careful, deliberative budget that aligned with what we heard from council at the retreat. Thank you for your support.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions of staff or comments they'd like to share at this time? Mayor Pretem Johnson.
I don't have any comments, if nobody else does, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, I have some comments. As Town Manager just said, same levels is what this budget is. At our last meeting, I put forth some ideas of ways that we could maybe improve the recommended budget and make it better. So, I just wanted to share that there were four separate items that I think, each of which, if any one of them was to receive a one-cent property tax increase, would put us in a stronger stead going forward. We heard from three different people about affordable housing, so I'd be definitely in favor of doing that. The long-range staffing plan, I think we could provide some more staff so that their workload would be a little bit more balanced, they'd be able to be more creative. I would support a penny for land acquisition in a more general way. We could use it for parks, town center, future senior or community center, or affordable housing. I would also be very interested in knowing if any fellow council members would like to allocate a new one penny to preserve our savings account instead of moving down our fund balance. So, I just wanted to share those four things once again, to see if there's any support for any of those, and then I'll be quiet, and then if no one has anything to share, we would start entertaining motions to adopt this budget. Okay? I'd like to recognize Councilmember Ralph, followed by Councilmember Fender.
If possible, as we progress this year, Manager Page, if you could continue to advise us on how the Affordable Housing Plan matures, what the program, what our options would be for funding this year, that would be helpful. And the solid waste fee, I know we've redirected you to bring that forward. One of the reasons I support, you know, these kinds of increases, but I just don't know whether the time is right, if we're considering a solid waste fee that's going to increase access capacity, so I would just ask the council to kind of look at these other areas, potentially, like, if we do a solid waste fee, would we might be able to have, you know, the ability to set, you know, an increment of tax for land acquisition and things like that, will we have options in the next few months?
So, a lot to unpack there. I'll try to sort of take it, so, as we mentioned, I think, last week, staff has continued to work on framing the preferences the council has stated in the Affordable Housing Plan, and that is slated to come to you in July, and will go to P Z B before it goes to you, which is also slated for June. You've given the guidance on the structure you want, but it would be handled differently in the budget depending on some of those decisions that you made, and I'm just also going to try to advise you to have all of the information. You're making a huge policy decision about affordable housing and then where it will fit in. It does not mean we're not already working, it does not mean we're not already talking to Habitat for Humanity. I'm going to skip solid waste for a second. You may only set your tax rate once a year, so you cannot come back mid-year and set a tax rate, but I do think that that's aligned with council's guidance that they did give us to accelerate and expedite a review and evaluation of your solid waste options that we could be bringing you mid-year. You are able to set fees. I think we also have to say, it's an aggressive timeline, but we intend to get started already. For example, Wake Forest implemented last year, and I've already been in touch with the manager there to get those lessons learned and pull out the information that we have. So, those things are going to continue to come to you throughout the year. Does that help answer the questions?
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate the mayor's bringing these points up, and I just think we can get to that point, but it seems like this better wait a little while.
Councilmember Fender.
Thank you, I just have a couple of things I want to touch on. One is, I guess, is reiterate that we're not changing the tax rate this year. We did have one public comment that seemed to think we were increasing the taxes, which we're not. We are eliminating the user fees at the senior centers since, especially since the senior advisory committee did not have a chance to be. Senior Advisory Committee did not have a chance to be a part of that decision. You know, we, last week, gave the staff direction to start looking at the solid waste fee, so I hope we're not going back on that now. Affordable housing, while I think it is too late to implement in this year's budget, I do hope we keep a focus on affordable housing and, like our town manager stated, they are talking to Habitat and looking at options that we can implement in the coming year. But however, I do think we need to keep in mind the possibility of implementing that one-cent tax increase next year solely for affordable housing to help with the down payment assistance for our teachers and first responders. So I just want to keep that in the, in our narrative to continue to talk about and not let us forget that that is still in the forefront of our, in the town council's minds right now. And that's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, welcome. To recognize you attending the meeting at this time. Did you have anything on this agenda which might be a conflict of interest or appearance of conflict of interest, just to cross that T?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you very much.
I do want to be recognized to speak on this.
I recognize you to speak, yes.
Very good. I just wanted to share that it was really good that we had such thoughtful comments from the public, that we had such a great discussion with the council about budget items. And the discussion last week after hearing some of the feedback from our seniors really resonated the power of one's voice. We heard, you know, that there was concern, and we put a pause on those fees at this time. We really do value the public feedback. I'm not in favor of adding a one-cent tax for the Affordable Housing Program at this time because I do not believe we are aligned as a council on what that allocation would be for exactly, and I want that program to mature more so that we're very clear about how it is to be used and be clear to the public on how they can be eligible, because it's a two-way street. Communication is very important. And most importantly, this budget is taking into account affordability as a whole. We are keeping the tax rate flat. We're examining some fees that were putting a burden on those that are at-risk populations, such as our seniors. And we also kept the Morrisville Shuttle free. That opens the affordability for all age groups across our town. So although we're not allocating one cent of the taxes to an Affordable Housing Program, we are including elements of affordability within this budget, and I'm very proud of that. Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other comments. If we could have all the motions on the screen, we can go through those and approve this recommended budget.
So, yes, sir. So under the recommendation, staff has spelled out all of the action items in order. It has been typical in the past that you can read those and adopt those all collectively together at once. It's been a tradition, as long as you support all of those.
Okay. Is everyone comfortable with that, just reading that once? I think Mayor Portem was interested in doing that.
I do. I wanted to make some comments, too, but I can make them at the end.
Well, why don't we have the motion, and then we can make comments as part of the discussion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Budget Ordinance 2023-182-A as proposed, establishing the annual operating budget, CIP, for fiscal year 2024. Adopt Resolution 2023-182-B, authorizing the levy and collection of taxes and fees by Wake and Durham Counties. Adopt Grant Project Ordinance Amendment 2023-182-C, appropriating ARPA funds for projects. Resolution 2023-182-D, to adopt FY '24 through FY '28 Capital Investment Program, and adopt Capital Budget Ordinance 2023-182-E relating to the CIP capital budget.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion on that motion. Mayor Portem, did you want to make comments?
My only comments are that, I rarely do this, but I'm going to push back a little bit on the town manager's comments. I think, you know, this budget is a strong, shows us a strong foundation for our core services, and not only are we keeping our core services, but I would argue that we're enhancing some of them. I mean, when we look at our, what we're doing in our parks and rec with our basketball courts, we're moving forward on the dog park, we're actively purchasing or looking at pursuing additional parkland, and like we just heard about enhancement to our smart shuttle, I would say not only are we keeping those core services that our residents have come to value and have become accustomed to, but we're enhancing them, too. So I'm grateful for that. I think we're also taking care of our employees, which I think is incredibly important in these days before we start adding even more employees. We're taking care of those that are here with us today. We're finishing projects and planning for the future and doing all that while maintaining a really strong financial position that's evidenced by our AAA credit rating, our strong fund balance, and our robust capital improvement program. You know, the new parks, roads, sidewalk and intersection improvements, a town center project with the town green are all included in here, and I'm grateful for all that we're able to accomplish in this budget. I hear the Affordable Housing conversation needs to continue. I'm grateful and I'm happy to hear folks that did give us, the three folks that did recently give us input into the Affordable Housing and that they are willing to have a tax increase to fund an Affordable Housing Program once we adopt it. We need to kind of build on that and make sure that more here, more of our residents understand whatever this future adopted program is and how we need to financially fund it. Having said all that, there are always things in a budget that we don't always all get our way. There are things in the budget that we're all not happy with. I will tell you the one, and I've said this over the years, the one, probably the one that comes to mind every year is the annual salary increase for council. I'm never happy, I was not happy when we enacted that. And as I've always said in the past, that differential in the salary increase, I take and donate to nonprofits that work here in the Morrisville community, and I encourage others to do the same. But I think this is a good budget for FY '24.
Anyone else have any other comments? Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of this year's FY '24 budget and everything else as listed, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously 7-0. Thank you to staff for all their hard work. Thank you to council for all the discussion and for sharing their thoughts. This was the most important vote that we take every year, and it really sets the stage for the future and shows how we value our staff and the programs they put forth on behalf of our residents and all our stakeholders. So, big thank you to all our staff. You keep getting paid this upcoming year. Congratulations. Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay. All these motions were all at once. Okay. At this time, we are at future meetings, events, and citizen involvement, resident involvement opportunities. We have a few. So, the Western Wake Farmers Market offers healthy and fresh food and goods from small and local businesses from 8:00 AM to noon every Saturday at The Healthy Food Hub, 280 Town Hall Drive. Visit http://wwfm.ag to see a complete list of local vendors, and please shop local. Join us this Thursday, May 25th, as we celebrate the opening phase of, opening of Phase Three of Morrisville Community Park at 10:30 AM. You'll get to see Councilmember Ralph's tennis racket again. Apply to become a Town Advisory Committee member, which offers residents a chance to be involved in the town council's decision-making processes by providing input on important matters. The following committees have vacancies or expiring terms that may be filled during the deployment cycle. Environment and Stormwater, Smart City Steering, Parks and Recreation, Performance Measures, Public Education, Senior Advisory, and Public Safety. So most of our committees need people, so please join in. The deadline to apply is Wednesday, May 31st at 5:00 PM. Apply now to the town website. The town is excited to announce the official launch of its Morrisville Means Business Program. Through this program, up to 30 Morrisville small businesses may receive COVID-19 microgrants. All Morrisville businesses are also encouraged to apply for free one-hour business assessments within attorney, CPA, or marketing professional. Applications open on May 22nd. Visit the program website for additional information or to apply for either of these programs. Please visit the Dunkin' Donuts at 2121 TW Alexander Drive this Thursday on May 24th from 7:00 until 11:00 AM to support the Morrisville Police Department as they raise money for the Special Olympics Committee during its Cover a Cruise event, Cruiser Event. As part of the Dunkin' Donuts for the Community Cups Icon Campaign, whenever a donation is made to Special Olympics NC, an icon sticker is placed onto a patrol vehicle. The goal is to get as many icons on the police cruiser as possible. We have National Seniors Health and Fitness Day on May 31st, and the Morrisville Senior Center will be hosting several activities promoting health and wellness, and they'll all be free. The day's activities will begin at 10:00 AM with a walk along Hatcher Creek Greenway. Walkers will meet up at the picnic shelter at Morrisville Community Park at 1520 Morrisville Parkway. Yoga will follow at 11:00 AM at the park. Additional activities will be offered at the Morrisville Senior Center, including hearing screenings at 11:30, a Way Less Live More Seminar at 1:00 PM, a Mind Fit Program at 1:45, physical therapy balance assessments at 2:00, and a low-impact cardio interval class at 6:00. Participants will get a free t-shirt, water bottle, or tote bag while supplies last. Signups are now open for the Morrisville Aquatics and Fitness Center Field Day, which will include recreational games, a social, and prizes. The Field Day will take place on Friday, June 2nd, from 6:30 PM until 8:30 PM at the MAFC. Come out for an evening of play with the community. The event is free for all community members, and kids 12 and older may attend with a guardian. To sign up, type "spring into summer fun" on our website search bar. Also on Friday, June 2nd, join us for Music in the Park Celebrates Pride at The Healthy Food Hub, 280 Town Hall Drive, for music, games, and an artisan market from 6:00 PM until 9:00 PM. This event will feature bingo, a blues-based rock band, and an Asian artisan market with 15 vendors, including Brewster's Ice Cream. Hope everyone has a fun Memorial Day weekend. For a full listing of events, please see the town calendar at www.townofmorrisville.org or sign up for our Next Week in Morrisville Friday emails. At this time, we're at council and manager comments. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Garamella, followed by Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I think the only comment I would have is thanks to the council and the staff for working together and getting the budget approved. And it was not an easy addition for each one of us, but we calculated, and we saw what was in the best interest of all, and I think I'm very happy with what we did. Thank you, staff.
Thank you.
And Jeannie, by the way.
And Jeannie, yep. Councilmember Scroggins-
And the Jeannie.
You just let me know when you're done.
After five minutes?
Whatever you want. Okay. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, followed by myself.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say that I'm really grateful for such a wonderful staff and leader, and Jeannie and all of her team, because it's not just one individual, but it's the, really the whole town that comes together and helps support this very important process. But the public is also a major player in that, and we are very grateful for engagement and the opportunity to have those discussions, whether they're in formal events, through social media, or just, you know, having a chat on the corner. It's just kind of important to each of us and to each other that we have that discussion about what do we want our town to be. And I think the next year, it's going to be even better. And as an all-American city, watch us. Thank you.
Okay. I would like to say thank you to Wake County Manager David Ellis for taking time out of his schedule to be a part of our Morrisville Chamber C-Suite Conversation Series this morning at Wake Tech Morrisville Campus, and thank you to our many staff for being there as well. I thought it was a great conversation. High school graduations have begun, and I look forward to watching many of our next generation take this next step on their life's journey. At this time, Councilmember Robati, followed by Councilmember Fender.
I, yeah, just like to, everybody has said the same thing, thank the staff for another relatively painless budget cycle, not for you guys, but, you know, for us. And thank you for, once again, putting together a budget that I really feel reflects, maybe not every single thing we wanted, maybe not, you know, maybe not the dream, but reflects, but solidly reflects the things that are important to us as a council and are, I believe, important to the citizens of the town. So thank you.
Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Ralph.
Yeah, I want to, I'm going to change it up a bit, because we have a council comment since Spring Fest, so I want to thank the staff for everything you guys put into Spring Fest and all of you that chose to spend your Saturday in Morrisville hanging out with us. It was good going to all the different tables and talking to you guys, Jeannie, Michael, Rochelle. It was good seeing you all, and it was good for me, talking to the residents out there as well. And then, lastly, I want to read something from our website that is about our community. "The town and the community are committed to diversity and inclusion for all residents, residents, businesses, and visitors. The town maintains a focus on cultural awareness and celebrating the cultural diversity of our community." So one of our core values in Morrisville is diversity and inclusion of all people from all walks of life, maybe not your walk, not just your walk of life, but yours and every line of life. So that's all I have."
Thank you. Councilmember Ralph, followed by Mayor Portem Johnson.
Thank you. Just a few comments. Great work on the budget. I want to wish everyone a happy National Public Works Week, which is this week. Thank our department, and also congratulations to the graduates. I know Evan is graduating, our son Ryan, who was five years old when I was sworn in on my first term, is graduating from Panther Creek, and just want to congratulate all the graduates. Speaking of that, I want to thank Rush Hour Karting. I've been visiting a lot of small businesses, but yesterday, they hosted the Panther Creek, I've been working with the Panther Creek tennis team this year, and they hosted our tennis party. So it was really fun to run the go-karts, and just want to thank them for that. I visited Raj Bhandari at Science X as part of a business tour, and I really want to congratulate him. He's Nepali-American, who got the SBA Exporter of the Year and was presented the award by the President of the United States two weeks ago. And also, congratulations to Honest, the restaurant, which just opened up. Kudos to our team for winning the Smart Cities Connect Award. We continue to lead in this area across the state and country, and I was honored to welcome a delegation from Indonesia to Morrisville a few days ago to discuss data and technology. Feder Boanitis, who's actually a Morrisville resident, attended that event, and she's actually written a book on AI. My final remarks, I just want to say, before I hand it over to the Mayor Portem, is we're going to be, this entire month has been Military Appreciation Month, and there's been so many different months. Sometimes it's hard to just focus in on such an important part of our country, the people who serve our nation. So if you're listening to this, we're grateful. If you're a veteran, if you have a loved one that's in harm's way, we pray for their safety, and we're so grateful for their bravery and courage. Just a few days ago, I was in Washington, and I ran the link to Lincoln Memorial, and on the way back, I dropped by the- way back, I dropped by the Vietnam Memorial and the World War I Memorial on my run back to where I was staying. And I just couldn't believe 58,000 soldiers died in Vietnam and 116,000 in World War I, and over 2 million soldiers in our country died in defense of our freedom as a nation and as Americans. And I just want all of us to just stop and think about that. And I want to end with the Morrisville Veterans Memorial. It's so important that we encourage anyone listening, any business, any resident to support our Morrisville Veteran Memorial. You can go to morrisvillvetonememorial.com because we need a place in Morrisville where we can honor our veterans, pray for those who have fallen for our country, support their families, and just pray and be grateful that we are part of a nation that produces such fine citizens. So I just want to, you know, look, we'll be gone on Memorial Day, but encourage anyone to attend events and I just wanted to know that even, that note. Thank you.
Mayor Protam Johnson.
So I want to thank Councilmember Fender for reading what she just did. You know, I, I always talk, when I get every opportunity, I talk about the fact that I'm really proud of the fact that we are a welcoming, inclusive and diverse small town. And I say small town because we cultivate that small-town feeling, and I'm really proud of that. And we talk about that amongst ourselves a lot and in our planning, but when we have a resident like Rabbi Coulter who came up here tonight and echoed those words and said we are a welcoming community that values all the diversity that we have, that really is, I, I think that says a lot. So I wanted to just say that. The other thing, or the one thing I really wanted to talk about, I ran into our Wake School Board Representative, Chris Hagerty, and he wanted to come here tonight, but he had a conflict, and I told him I would mention this at comments. The Wake County School Board is getting ready to adopt the name of the future high school that will be here in Morrisville, and they are, it looks like leaning toward calling it Morrisville High School. So if he was here, he would ask us if we're okay with that. So I told him I would bring it up, so it's on the recording. If he's watching or gets to listen to the recording, he can give feedback back to the group, and I believe it's next week that they're going to vote. So I, for one, I love the idea that it's going to be called Morrisville High School. So I did not want to speak for the rest of you, so if you want to give Chris some feedback, you can do that.
Why don't we start down there and just go down the line with any thought?
Yeah, is there, is there any possibility of naming it after Maple Q? I was just wondering, but I love Morrisville High School, and that's not a possibility?
Yeah.
So I think they're getting away from actual people, although I, I love your idea. Yeah. But I fully support having a Morrisville High School called Morrisville High School.
I couldn't say it better than that. I fully support a Morrisville High School that's called Morrisville High School.
Yeah, it sounds a little boring, but it's to the point. So I support Morrisville High School. We've been wanting it for a very, very long time.
Very.
T-shirts.
Yeah, support it completely.
Absolutely.
So, oh, by the way, I asked him if he wanted a letter, and he said that was not necessary. Just if there was some kind of conversation, that would be enough for him.
What were the other choices?
I don't know.
Paramount, Paramount High School.
Thank you. That's, that is correct.
Because it's on Paramount Parkway.
They tend to like to name the schools after the streets that they're on and not people. So that's why, if you all remember, Morrisville Elementary, that road was not Morrisville Parkway, it was called Cross Timbers Parkway. And the council back in the day did not want to call the elementary school Cross Timbers Elementary School, so they changed the name of the road to Morrisville Parkway, so they had to name it Morrisville Elementary School.
Love it.
He's a great trivia. But I like Morrisville High School. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Excellent.
So does it mean we change Parkside to Marsville, then we have Marsville Elementary, Marsville Middle and Marsville High?
Actually, that was another option called Parkside High School. That was another option.
That was an option. Town Manager Page, is there any comments?
I do. I'm actually going to start with the last one about the Morrisville High School. I also spoke to Mr. Hagerty this morning. It's not next week, there's a fifth week in May, it is June 6th. He and I talked about ways to coordinate attendance at that event, and he and I are meeting later this week to coordinate some of those logistics as well as potentially bringing Teachers of the Year to Morrisville at a June meeting to be recognized by town council. And then I just, again, would like to reiterate my, my thanks to council, more for our staff who I love dearly and always do consider taking care of them as the highest priority in the budget. And I am always very grateful that that is not a tough conversation to have with the council and that you also unfailingly support the compensation and the requests that we make for staff. It's, it's just really valuable, and I'm very grateful for that, and, and just want to again say thank you.
Okay.
And, I'm sorry. And while our May 25th meeting was always tentative, I would love it if you would formally take that off of your calendar. A reminder, you did get a invitation to a Western Wake Town Hall that is on Thursday from 6:00 to 7:00 at the Cary Town Hall with some of our state representatives.
To that end, would we have to have a motion and to, and take action to remove that from our calendar?
Yeah. Cancel the May 25th tentative work session.
Okay. I would like to recognize Councilmember Robati.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion on that motion? Okay. All those in favor of canceling that tentative work session, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously seven zero. Thank you very much. Anything else for the good of the order, Town Manager Page?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Excellent. We are adjourned. Thank you for watching this meeting of the Morrisville Town Council. We hope you plan to join us again, that would be June 13th. Please feel free to email your town council members at towncouncil@townofmorrisville.org or visit www.townofmorrisville.org/council for additional contact information. Is there a motion and second to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously seven zero. It is 8:05. We are adjourned. Thank you all.